Started. Welcome, everybody, to the agenda of the city of Coachella. The city council, close session, regular meeting. The city council, city, and the Coachella sanitary district, control fire protection district, control finance and authority. Coachella. Education and government access cable channel corporation, Coachella water authority and successor agency. To the redevelopment agency. It's five o'clock on March twenty second, twenty twenty-three. I'm gonna go ahead and call. This meeting to order. I'm gonna ask our our city attorney, if you can know for. The record, the attendance, we did get a call from. Also, Mayor Potem Galarza, that he has a work obligation would not be able to attend today. With that, we. Majority of the council, all the councils here, with the exception, Mayor Potem. With respect, we don't need to take an action now, Carlos, right? With respect to virtual public meetings. So I'm gonna ask that we fix the agenda now and take that off. April. And then also the the front notices as well. As those are no longer required. If that will move on to approval of the agenda at this time, the council board preparation authority may announce any items being pulled from the agenda or continue to another date or test. To remove an item on the agenda. Is there any changes to the?
Agenda. Yes, Mr. Mayor, we want to add to a under presentations, public safety presentation. By Clementina.
And.
That is all.
Okay, is is gonna get a motion. To accept the agenda with the modification.
Motion.
Another motion, there are seconds.
One second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll move on now to. Public comments is our, this is for a close session. There's this conference with legal negotiator pursuant to government close section. Fifty-four, ninety-five, seventy-six. Seeing none, we'll adjourn to close session. Hi, gentlemen. Cristian has got the hat on, got the hat on. I told, I told Lisa on the, you know, because supervisor Perez. Wears hats too. And I was like, who's wearing the best hat today? You know what I mean? Uh huh.
Bonnet?
Yeah. It's all right. We, uh. City council has reconvened from a close session, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you. City Council, but a close session on the item on the agenda. Received direction, but were portable facts were taken. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to our pledge of allegiance. Please tell me you lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the. State of America. And to the republic, always the sense, one nation, under God, in this world, liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have, uh. Well, I'm gonna take, there's two A. I see Clementina is here. Clementina, welcome. You get to address us. We added you your two A. So, welcome. I told you real quick. You have. Three.
Three? Very ten. Okay.
Give you four.
When I start this. Thank you. Invited me to be there. Okay. The first thing that we're gonna discuss right now in our graphic. They, the. The statue of Sesa.
Excuse me, can you speak into the microphone, please?
The statue of Sesa, there's gonna be place here on the city of Coachella. Okay, I only have this picture right now, so. If I bring it to you, you guys can take.
A picture?
Yes.
Yeah. That'd be great.
This is the way that it's gonna be here. Is specially signed for the. And this is how much it's gonna cost them. We're not gonna bring myself up to. Forty thousand dollars is required for them to start. The project. In the rest, we have to bring it up before the.
Okay.
Tell him the others, the one going on. Okay, so if you can see right here.
You gotta speak into the mic, Clementina, because we're not gonna, but if you wanna leave that here, leave that here.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
See how the the flag comes up from the big ass on? And he's stepping in the little ones that he fought for. You guys see how he's carrying the books? Because his. His goal was for us. Especially for me, that he sent me to school to get educated. Like he said, Clementina, we're never gonna get, we're never gonna win if we don't. Get educated. Nothing got. This one's here. This is the way it's probably gonna look like. When everything is done. I have another problem is right here. That one, it's past it, forty thousand. But it says us here, and I beg this man that he was gonna be the farm workers paying for this. Because exactly that's what we are. But the only problem is, even though Sesa is. He's here, his spirit is here. He has a lot of enemies. That statue right there has been decapitated three times. Okay, it's in Riverside. Another one that he displayed, um, is another one in in Oxnard. It's another one somewhere else. All of them, they're being vandalized. Because it's him. The next, I'm not gonna take long. Is to rename the streets. Of the city of Coachella that I submitted. What? Many, many years ago, because it took twenty years to name this, the. The. Harrison Avenue for Sesa, so we submitted that like fifteen years ago. And I collected these two thousand signatures. For these other streets to be named after that. The farm workers that they died, you know that already. So here. These sort of are top here again, so you guys can keep it. I just make sure these are the pictures. Those my figure. But then. I talk to the family of Sesa, because we're gonna be doing a lot of activities here for the family of Sesa. And I know the ones that are here, just to keep this one present. No doubt that this statue, we're gonna have a museum, I'm getting ready for a museum. That is gonna take a name, we're gonna introduce it, if it's possible. And these are the requests now, remind you about. The two thousand signatures that I submitted, and it wasn't easy, because it was very hard to collect them. Okay, and one of them appear, says, um. What's his name? Martin Luther King, but if. People don't agree with that, it's killing Chavez. You can take one to each one, and all the names that people that they died. So you, how much it's gonna cost, but this. In. You're this. Then Chavez. It says that it's on the other side. Okay. If we want this one.
Well, I think we have, yeah.
So, also, in in the statue of Sesa in the bottom. When these get this completed. We're gonna have to have a plan for the evacuation of campesino. Because this prayer. He prayed this every day. If you ever go to work, he buried. Every day. He prayed our. Is that okay?
What, to what, put that on the statue?
And the statue down.
In the bottom.
In the bottom.
Well, we'd have to ask the artist if we can do that. Yeah, we wish we could.
Yeah, 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 he will do anything, he's just waiting. So don't forget. That this is the price we just, that we can pay. All this. Campesino that they died shot. Some by the list, some of them by the same growers. We cannot just forget about them. These people are the real heroes. Sesa was the leader, yes, but we were the ones. Leading the fight. We were the ones that paid the price. Let's not forget about them.
Clementina, thank you so much for.
Ten minutes, hold on. I forget, police station. We gotta be safe, right? Take my notes. Okay. We need the police department. Now, it's up. The crime rate has gone up so high. Right there where I live, you know. I love my little humble house. It's every day when I wake up, I see this name street, says my Chavez. Every day we hit crimes. And nobody's doing nothing about it. Those plants that I planted myself, they just vandalize every day. They come with knives, chow them off. Knocked us, um. The signs off. They drive over the sidewalks, knocking everything down, and nobody's there. They're killing kids every day. Why are we allowed to? For these things to happen? We need a feedback. What's gonna happen with the police department? You guys been here so many years. This, this place used to have a police department, and it was a lot smaller. Do you want me to get another two thousand signatures? Or you want me to do? Well, God's side, you want me to sit or not eat? We need the police. I can't sleep. Thinking about these kids that have been killed, we cannot allow that. I am responsible for that. Each one of you are responsible for that. Everybody is responsible for the safety of every citizen in Coachella. You guys have a lot of potential. You guys can do it. Myself. Anything I can do, we cannot let this go. And then another thing is, our young people, we cannot. I mean, look at the school district, how much they point to. I have my nietos in there. They can't take any no more. They go with fear. How are they gonna learn? This is the future. Like, I do feel this to the hospital. Myself. To show them. You know, their careers for the future. I can talk to the big countries of Eisenhower. Why are being students? From outside the United States, we have applications from every state of the of the United States trying to get into the medical. Um, lab. Program. Doctors in there. You know how hard it was for me to get a permission from that? And I let you go now.
Thank you.
We must bring our kids to. A better safety place, and you guys can do it. In effect. Doctor Lewis can start working up and on on the case that Eisenhower should build a hospital here in. In in Coachella.
Thank you, Clementina. Thank you so much.
And I I really need to hear from the police department really bad in these petitions. And I'm very proud to tell you guys. That the city of Coachella, the name, is in Germany. It's in Germany already.
Thank you.
Okay, they they wanted to know if the street was named after Sesa. They want a feedback. I have to get a translator when I come. In effect, they're making money out of the city of Coachella over there.
Thank you, Clementina.
Thank you, and I see you again.
Thank you so much for.
When do I come back?
Thank you. We're gonna move on now to park engagement report, I think it's. Gracias. Thank you. This is for us, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good evening. Just, uh, this is station.
Please be sure to speak into the microphone.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. My name is Martin Gill, community coordinator, KDI. Here with me is my associate, or sorry, my colleague, Christian Rodriguez, community associate. He will be assisting me with answering any questions we might have after the presentation. Sorry, thank you. I want to share with you our goals for this project, our methodology. An overview of our data findings, and finally, our recommendations. For those of you that don't know us, KDI is an organization that works with disadvantaged communities. To promote public health, bolster resilience, and expand equitable access to income generating opportunities. We do this through landscape, architecture, planning, design, and advocacy. We have worked with the city extensively on a variety of projects. For this project. Our goal was to engage Coachella residents and collect feedback on priorities for new parks coming to Coachella. On Avenue fifty-two and Fronterosa Drive, and Ninth Street and Shady Lane. We also asked residents if they wanted a splash pad in Veterans Park, and. What improvements they wanted to see in Top Park on Cayenne Palme and Avenue fifty-three. We were able to engage with approximately six hundred residents from September twenty twenty-two to February twenty twenty-three. Our engagement strategy was two-pronged. Our first strategy was a short, short survey. That captured communities' priorities for new and existing sites. The questions in the survey were designed to collect broader feedback on priorities for all parks. Together with the city, the KDI team collected four hundred and twenty-seven responses. Our second strategy was in-person engagement at city-hosted events. We tabled five events, two movie nights, Las Fiesta Patrias in September twenty twenty-two. Run with Los Muertos in November, and a Top Park event hosted by the city. In February twenty twenty-three, that concluded our engagements. As in, as incentives for participation, we raffled three prizes. At Las Fiesta Patrias, we raffled one hundred dollar gift card to survey participants, and we gave out free nachos at the city, at the top lot event. City hosted. Here, we have a picture on top left of the Top Park event, and our table set up at Run with Los Muertos. With my colleague. I want to share with you an overview of our data collected. Heat impact and shade were the most common themes. During our engagement, where seventy-six percent of people agreed on having a splash pad on Veterans Park for this reason. Where thirteen and twelve percent of people disagreed. Continuing with the topic of heat resiliency, the top priorities were shade structures and new gardens for improvements on the top park. Overall, safety and wellness were the top two priorities for the new parks in Coachella. And participants want lighting and shade. To be the leading factors for, to be considered in the designs. The recommendations we covered in our report include the improvements for the two existing parks that the community prioritizes. Adopting heat resilience and shade equity as guiding principles for the two future parks. And creating a Coachella Parks Master Plan to implement park improvements per residents. Preferences. By creating Coachella Parks Master Plan, the city will be able to institutionalize equity measures like shade. And climate resilience for any future parks in the city. Thank you. Any questions?
I don't have any questions. You guys always do an outstanding job of just providing all the details from start to finish. It's something that you guys have just mastered and strengthened over time, and so I appreciate all the details and all the attention that you give to our community. To make sure it's an easy process to give feedback, so thank you for that.
Just in terms of. The question mean, and like your strategy, you guys, I imagine you work with the park committee and what it's. Kind of put all of this together.
For the record, Christian Rodriguez, community associate, for complete design initiative, that's correct. We work with city staff to establish the parameters of our of our questions in the survey. And we took the opportunity to use that in a more broader sense to get a snapshot of how residents were feeling about parks in general.
Curious about your recommendation regarding a park master plan?
Yeah, and and.
But then also. If you can elaborate on on shade equity and what that means.
Yeah, absolutely. So our our region is impacted severely by heat. Climate change is only going to exacerbate this problem. We, as a region, have not really taken on the lead in implementing design parameters and measures. Uh, we, as a region, have not really taken on the lead in, um, implementing design parameters and measures to combat this issue. Uh, we see cities, big cities like Los Angeles, who are now doing all of these adaptive measures to offset the problems that they've created themselves, um, in the urban heat island. And so, in our region, as development is coming, uh, we, as a firm, are very interested in providing, uh, the opportunity for cities to consider, uh, things that instead of being, um, adaptive, being more proactive. And so, our, um, recommendation for a master plan is really to start thinking, um, about how we could do that through your public space system, uh, and then hopefully that could start a conversation with more, you know, planning, um, projects later.
I imagine that what our residents are thinking is not just trees, but also different shade structures, or, or is it even like the trimming of our trees? Because we tend to have our trees just go straight up instead of create a shade.
Yeah, the, the conversation is varied, and I think, you know, the lived experience, um, sometimes doesn't always translate into the more technical terms, but uh, through the recommendations, we're able to, uh, really outline that people are interested in doing both natural and built interventions. And so, um, this scope did not cover anything further than just these on-the-surface recommendations, and we think that through a master plan, you could get to those more detailed, um, responses from residents as to how they would like the city to address the heat problem.
And, and your master plan is more of a recommendation on existing and new parts, or is it just, or, or help me understand the master plan idea?
It could be, we didn't, we, again, the script didn't really cover, uh, a more detail as how we would go about it. What we recommend is a way for you all to institutionalize for future, but we think there's an opportunity to also do an audit of, um, already existing sites. And so, a perfect example of that is people's, um, response to the splash pad in Veterans Park. Uh, we see that also as a cooling strategy, and people really, really resonate, it really resonated with folks because they said we would want something, some, some cooling, um, intervention at Veterans Park. And so, that to me is, uh, an example of the city being proactive.
Any other questions? I will thank you for your work.
Thank you very much.
For your work. Okay, we'll move on now to consent, uh, calendar. It is recommended that consent items be acted upon simultaneously, uh, unless separate action, except on the separate council members or actions. Especially, what are the wishes of the city council? Your motion to approve the consent?
Motion to approve the consent.
Is there a second?
All second.
Okay, uh, all those in favor signify by say nine.
Aye.
Any in opposition? All right, well, item number ten, I'm gonna abstain, uh, as I own property within five hundred feet of a set item. I'm gonna also do the same on item number thirteen as I've done in the document. I will ask, uh, the most senior member of the council to lead the, uh, agenda that we do council member, uh, that rather than to go ahead and lead the constitution.
Excuse me, sir.
Thank you.
Councilmember, I recommend that we go to skip item eleven, uh, item ten or city engineer.
Is he right outside?
Hello, council. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
So, as Christian and Martin were just discussing, um, one of the park initiatives that got a lot of support was a water feature at Veterans Park. Um, is this something the city has actually been looking at for a while? Let's see, can you go to the next slide? There we go. Um, so I don't recall if I've actually presented this to city council before I did present it to the, um, Parks Commission. Uh, but the location that we're thinking of for installing the splash pad is in the oval shape right now, which has some veteran memorial plaques. Right behind City Hall, adjacent to Orchard Street. As far as the condition right now, the plaques that are there, they're ground-mounted. They often have dirt kind of thrown on them and, and they, uh, I don't think they actually do a very good job at their current location of honoring the veterans and being kind of, um, the plaques that we'd like to see for that kind of veteran memorial. So, one of the ideas that we want to have is we want to protect those veterans monuments and not only install a splash pad at this location, but take those existing monuments and move them to a location where they can be, uh, better served and kind of better honored. As you can see on this diagram, we are proposing to relocate the plaques to that square planter area at the corner of Fourth and Orchard. And I have some diagrams later that, uh, will give an example of what that might look like. Um, as far as the project background, in February, um, this project was presented to the Parks and Recreation Commission, and they gave this guidance to seek RFPs from qualified design-built firms. In February, we solicited bids, and in March, we received bids from two qualified bidders, and California Water Development, Inc., was unanimously ranked as the most qualified firm to submit a proposal on the project. So, relative to the concepts that we've been looking at so far and the concepts that we submitted to the Parks Commission, this would have, this is the corner of Fourth and Orchard. So, this is how we would protect those existing plaques. We would take them and move them, and we'd actually put them up on angled areas where people can't step on them, uh, where they can actually be viewed better, that where those names on there. Can be better honored. Um, relative to the actual splash pad, uh, since this is a veterans park and it is running to City Hall, we are not thinking of going with a concept that has like a lot of children's playground stuff. It's not meant to be a, a, a loud type of park. It's meant to be kind of low-key, something that would be befitting of a veterans park and also being adjacent to City Hall where a lot of business takes place. Um, this is a rendering that we had, uh, done beforehand. Some of the ideas we're thinking of was to try to make it kind of military themed, so potentially something with a star, um, military color or something like that. And then we also show additional shade structures could be a potential that we would add here as well. The company that we're looking at, California Water, Solutions, they, this is a park that they did in Chula Vista at Millennial Stylist Park. Um, so I think this is kind of similar to the concept of something we'd be looking at. An at-grade feature that uh, looks good in like a business setting. This one was also a design-build contract, and it was delivered to the city of Chula Vista, uh, for four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So, that's kind of the the low-end range of, uh, for a full project when we look further into the construction side of things. Um, the company that, uh, bid on the project, they actually already submitted some potential conceptual designs. So, these are just concepts, uh, but again, sticking with something that's kind of military themed. And and at-ground features, not a lot of like, nothing above ground, and the big like splash pads or little pads, you know, you can find it at a playground. Um, another rendering that they prepared that, uh, we would like to have like lights or log machines or other things that could be worked into the design. As far as a schedule, right now, um, as listed in the staff report as well, where, since this is a design build, we're only looking to approve the design portion of the project. So, in April and May, we would be working with them to complete full conceptual designs, preliminary estimates for the project, and we'd be working with staff. We'd be reaching out to the community. We'd continue working with the Parks Commission, um, so that we can design a park that uh, meets everyone's needs and make sure that we have a park and we understand what the budgets are, the different considerations that, that people might ask for as far what we're going to place there. Around June, we would have those full conceptual plans that we could bring back to planning commission, and at that point, we would have a, a budget, and we would be able to work with city council to establish a budget for potential moving on through the construction phase.
Just for a quick point of clarification, is it July twenty twenty-four or July twenty twenty-three?
Um, it is July twenty twenty-three. Oh, yeah. I won't wait a whole year just to present it to you. Sorry, that's a typo on my end. Um, so, once we've worked through that final phase and, uh, everyone has a clear direction, we've had that engagement from the community and city council and the commissions as far as establishing what we want to see as a community and for a splash pad at this location. Then we would be able to present that as a CIP project, and we would present the final plan specifications and budgets to city council for the consideration for the construction phase. So, again, right now, we're just awarding the tier-one phase. We're just doing the, the design so that we can get our full design package and get that engagement with the community and the Parks Commission to see what we can do to get a splash pad at this location. So, the staff recommendations, uh, per the staff report, um, so authorize the city manager to execute the professional service agreement with California Water Development, Inc., and provide the design-build construction services amount not to exceed forty-six thousand dollars for the design phase. And then also authorize the appropriations from the general fund in order to fund this phase of the project. Does anyone have any questions about this project?
Does council have any comments or questions?
Just a couple of comments, um, and questions, so uh, the forty-six thousand, that's just for the design phase, right?
Yes.
Um, have we looked at what the maintenance of this splash pad is going to cost?
Um, that will definitely be included through the design phase. So, as we're looking at different options, the reason we wanted to go with a design build contract is we wanted to specifically work with the companies who do pools and do splash pads, so that we can look at those considerations. When we're going through the design phase, um, different aspects of how you do the project can change the amount of the annual maintenance drastically, uh, so you can have you know, some design considerations might result in a lot less maintenance, but might result in higher water bills where some, um, if you have a, a fully recirculating system with, um, that's fully automated with UV lights and everything, your price starts going up a lot, but you end up having this maintenance too. So, so those are all balances and trade-offs. That we would be looking at through the design phase with, with a professional firm who kind of knows what recommendations to make to minimize maintenance and what the upfront costs are, so we can balance that during the, during the design phase.
And I know we have, there's a few more in the city, right? Splash pads, I think we have one near on Shady Lane. I think there's one at the park there, and then there's one, um, and Bagduma. Do we have one in Bagduma? And apologies for the question, but do we usually have them like fu- fully functioning around winter? We still have them fully functioning? Doesn't matter, you know, the weather conditions or anything?
I'm not a hundred percent certain.
Good evening, council. Um, so in respect to your questions about maintenance, we do have three splash pads currently. Um, we have one at Te Oro, we have one at Bagduma, as you mentioned, we have one at Dayton. And all three operate from a starting Memorial Day weekend, and they stay on until it gets cool, which is usually honestly, it's in, into October.
Okay.
So, once we see the temperature drop back down, then we turn them off for the reason of the cost component and the water, um, cost component thereof, and the fact that we're trying to be, uh, conscious of water usage.
Okay, thank you.
Does that answer?
That does. Yeah, it does. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Those are all my questions for now.
I have one more question, Maritza, if you want to come back. How, uh, the other, this one is more centrally located to the downtown area. The other ones, have we had any, um, issues with, you know, a transient community using it for showers and stuff, and how would, how do we, how will we avert it that? Because this is more in a centralized space. So, how is that, you know? Is it hard to make?
Uh, the maintenance components that are challenged, uh, staff is, um, we've had these, um, for a while, so we're, we kind of have that programmed into our annual maintenance schedule. Um, we, with regards to transients, use of them, uh, you know, we really, um, it depends on the transient. Staff may approach them themselves if, if it's a transient that we know is a little bit more, um, you know, has some challenges and could be, um, a concern from safety for staff, then we usually interact with police in having the transient move along. But, um, yes, um, we have those challenges in both, uh, the restroom sometimes and at, at the splash pads during the summer months.
Then on design, um.
Thank you, Maritza.
Thank you. Yeah, I saw just stars, maybe looking at other things, eagles or other things more aligned, you know, and then more in the military kind of service. Maybe even if you put the, the different branches on there, right? So, it's something that honors everybody and other than, and a star is very, you know, catch-all, but that's fun for the kids also, because then they won't know what it is. The kids will be like, oh, it's just a star on the ground, so.
Uh, yeah, and that will be an interactive process, looking at that design and, um, having different concepts that we can present and, and move forward with.
Andrew, um, so when we're all done, what do you think the ballpark figure is gonna be?
It really depends on how kind of grand the overall project would be. In their presentation, they had kind of a a, a gold-plated option that would run roughly around nine hundred thousand. And the park I showed you in Chula Vista was four seventy-five, so realistically, we should be looking in that range. And that is for a full design um, and construction, but obviously, design is relatively small part of that, only being forty-six thousand. So, we would be, uh, a fully delivered project would probably be in that range, in the four hundred to nine hundred range, depending on how many bells and whistles, we wanted to put within the project.
I mean, we're, so we're talking about like maybe the most standard would be half a million. Yeah. And then, um, I mean, where would this funding be coming from?
As far as discussing funding for the construction phase, uh, that would be determined when we establish a CIP project as far as, um, once we know a final budget, so being able to establish that budget at that time.
So, would it be better to look at the CIP first and then maybe come back with this item? I'm just concerned about moving forward with this. I mean, we're gonna be spending forty-six thousand just to do a, you know, a design phase, then I want to make sure that we're gonna be able to follow through with it and not just be, you know, wasting the forty-six thousand.
Um, Bill, Bill, can you speak that, please?
Because we're adding capacity to the park, I would make the recommendation that we would use park diff fees. Um, there are, we repaid that because we went into the red with that when we actually did Veterans Park and some other projects, but that fund is flush again, so I would recommend using the park development impact fees for that, um, and depending upon it, because we don't know we're gonna build it for sure or not. I wanted to take the forty-six thousand out of the general fund, because if we didn't build it, I pulled it from parks, then I'd have to take it out of parks and put it back into the general fund. It's safer right now to charge this to the general fund at first, and if we do build the projects and that, the forty-six thousand will also be charged to the park development fund also.
How many do we, how much money do we have in the parks debt now?
I believe four hundred thousand. And every time a permit is pulled, uh, another almost six thousand goes into the park development impact fee fund. So, it could go slightly negative, but it would be with the stuff that we have in the pipeline. Yeah, it'll be cleared up before your end, so.
And then so, so we're gonna be spending about half a million dollars. We're gonna be taking that from the diff account. And then are we then saying that we're not gonna have any other needs in any other part um, where we can use some of that funding?
You know, in the past, if something did come up, I know that we have the Central Park grant that we're working on right now, and if there were additional monies that would be used, um, not that I prefer doing this, but we also, we want to make sure that if something we can charge to the park development impact fee fund, or even the fire fund, or the general facilities fund, we want to make sure that we can get those monies and collect them from developers when they come back in, because if we pay for something with another source, I can't go get that money from somebody else later on. So, we do what's called an inter-fund transfer, where I advance money from the general fund to the fund that needs it, and so over time, it would be repaid back. And that's what happened with the park. We went into the red, like I said, but the general. And that's what happened with the park. We went into the red, like I said, but the general fund has been made whole by the park fund now. We do that with the library as well, where we issued bonds and we borrowed fourteen million dollars to build the library. Right now, the library has a negative.
Huge deficit there.
It's like eleven, eleven million dollars, but if we had to use the sales tax. You know, the the bond proceeds from the sales tax measure to pay for the library, we wouldn't have had the ability to collect from any new development coming in to help. Pay for library. There's a lot of capacity within that library that new homes will benefit from, and that was justification for doing that. And so even though it it does not look good, it's a very prudent thing to. Put the money back into the general fund and and have the source of funding come from the fund that it should be, which is special revenue, because I can't take library money and pay for police with that. But I can repay the library and use the general fund money that we advanced to help pay for other things.
So it sounds like we've, you know, you've um mastered how to, you know, shift funds from here and there. Um, but do you think that we're moving prematurely and that we're gonna be using? You know, most of that parks this phase for. You know, I don't remember talking about this. When was this initiated or created um to have a splash pad here?
This was identified with the IG grant. It was part of the IG grant originally where we designed Sixth Street and uh. Some of the Mario Lascano right there, the sale on Fifth Street. Uh, but since that project went over budget, this part was taken out. Yeah, we still wanted to do it because with that was a good attraction. As Katie identified, uh, seventy six percent people want it, want it there, so we wanted to move forward with it, you know, we're being prudent. As Bill indicated, this is just for design, uh, as you know, the funds get, the different grows as houses get built. Then once we identify what the full scope is, we will bring that back to council and. You would be able to make that determination based on what's available and what's been designed to move forward with construction.
So why not just wait when a CIP comes back so we can see what else is coming through?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I didn't, I didn't think that we were aware of that, because the park fee. Fund has been in such a state, anytime that we go and do anything in parks, we're trying to find grants. And what we have to come up with typically, a grant will pay between seventy five to eighty percent of what we need, and then we have a matching, and then we use the park fees to. To match, and that's what we did with veterans too. It's just veterans ran a little more than we thought it was going to, and our park money was capped at two point eight million, so. We had to go borrow from the general fund, but uh, as far as I know, try talking to everybody, I thought that Central Park was really the only big project that's coming up. And you know, the top lot and things like that, but those are smaller projects, so those can be absorbed. It's. I'm I'm not too concerned over the next two years that we're gonna have something big coming through to where. This project itself would throw that off. I know that we're working with um. Chelsea on the Ninth Street Park, the Pocket Park, and they're putting three fifty towards it. We're gonna work with them to see if they can cut costs in other areas to help supplement that. But even at that, we're still talking maybe less than half a million dollars that we might have to chip in to actually get that thing built, so.
How long are we looking at for that part to come through? I mean, what do we have replenished the parks to feed by then?
For Ninth Street?
Yes.
You know, I I will know better in a couple of weeks, because I'm getting information from Development Services on the number of homes that are in the pipeline. But you know, if we do another two hundred homes again, you're talking about one point two million dollars coming into the general, not the general fund, but the um. Park Development Impact Fee Fund, and at that point, we would cover this and the Ninth Street Park. And I don't. I don't think that we're gonna slow down. I think we're gonna keep going with with what we're going with, because we also have a lot of investors buying homes too here. So even though rates are high, they're still selling it.
Have an issue with, yeah. What is council?
I would, I I agree with Councilwoman and go out on waiting and really, especially if you said you're gonna get more numbers into like two, three weeks. Right? So you can really have a good picture and be able to tell us.
We can absolutely do that.
I think, you know, that helps really understand where. You're gonna be, if you're gonna be whole, instead of rushing, you know, cutting a check. For this, and then you come to realize you're not gonna be able to afford this, and you know, where does this gonna sit? So. You know, I'd be okay with tabling the item, I don't know, but that's my opinion.
We don't have a grant for this, do we? Something waiting for us, timeline, anything? I'm okay with waiting us all.
Now, what we, we'll incorporate it into the discussion. We're coming back to you. Next meeting, we'll be talking about the the midyear. And the auditors are gonna be here to talk about the results of the financials for last year. Um, we'll do a first blush of the budget and the CIP at the first meeting of May. So I would recommend that we discuss that after we finished um the discussion of the CIP in May, because at that point, you'll see everything that's before you, what we're planning in the future for parks.
Perfect. And I think, um, you know, also, as we move forward, we need to take into consideration that. You know, some of the maintenance in the parks, like whether it was a top lot. You know, it's something that we need to take into consideration as well when we're looking at, you know, the park diff account.
Yes, we'll discuss what the maintenance would be or the water cost um when we bring it forward as well, because you're right, that. There are other costs associated that become fixed costs. This is a one time thing, but ongoing, you're right, you're exactly right. There's gonna be maintenance and and. And utility fees.
Okay, thank you. Is there a a motion to bring this back?
Yeah, motion to table this item until second meeting in April, is that fine? First meeting in May.
Is there a second? I'll second that. Roco? Cardinals.
Yes. Councilmember Dr. Figueroa?
Yeah, I.
Councilor Beadham?
I.
And the council member Delgado?
Yes.
Passes three oh.
And then are we bringing back the mayor? Did he say also he's abstaining?
Uh, number thirteen.
Which one is?
Well, that's the mural, right?
So he's coming back for. Item number thirteen.
Good evening, council. Selena Jimenez, Economic Development Director. Thank you. Uh, yeah, so the item before you is a mural by Michelle Guerrero. And here, here is a photo of the artist Michelle Ruby Guerrero. She is also known as Mr. B Baby. And I wanted to provide you guys with a little bit of background information about uh this item. Uh, the item before you seeks your approval for a new mural by Michelle Guerrero. Uh, the mural uh by the artist was previously approved by the Culture and Arts Commission on September twenty seven, twenty twenty two. And by the city council on October twelve, twenty twenty two. Uh, however, the owner of the site where the previously approved mural would have been installed wasn't, was unable to grant the permission needed to install an art mural. Due to other construction improvements that will be made to the uh building. Uh, a little bit up, a little bit about Michelle. Uh. Michelle uh is also known, as I mentioned earlier, as Mr. B Baby, and it stands for Michelle Ruby Brown Baby, and she was born and raised in San Diego, California. Uh, she uses the elements of her heritage as an inspiration for her striking and lively artwork. Uh, Michelle is heavily influenced by her community as well as her Puerto Rican Mexican heritage. And she combines vibrant colors uh with traditional imagery. Uh, Michelle is able to uplift her audiences and intrigue her viewers uh with her artwork. Um, so she aims to bring happiness and joy to her audiences and community while also having uh stronger messages embedded in her artwork. Uh, which are open to the viewer's interpretation. Uh, Michelle does hold a bachelor's degree in fine arts from the Academy of Art University, San Francisco. Uh, her art murals have been commissioned by the following acclaimed companies and organizations. Uh, Dodger Stadium, the Getty, uh, the San Diego Jewish Center, Los Angeles Art District. Uh, Congress Shoes and UPS and Kids of Immigrants, to name a few. Uh, these are some examples of her artwork. Uh, here we see her main character Chucho, and he's a. Uh, at Dodger Stadium, and then we see another art mural by Michelle uh with the Cheeto uh guy. And here are some other examples uh of her artwork. Um, the first one, it's, I I think it's at a children's museum. And then uh other interesting murals that she's uh painted. And so the proposed mural location is Anaya's Auto Repair Building, and this building is on Fifth Street and Grapefruit Boulevard. And so the submitted proposal is a painted mural project celebrating the city of Coachella's cultural vibrancy, featuring the artist's signature character Chucho. Who is a colorful furry piñata. Uh, so the brief history of how Chucho came to be is founded in the beginnings of the piñata, which originated in China. When paper figures were filled with seeds and then broken as a way to bring good luck for the coming harvest season. So in Mexico, the Aztecs honored the birthday of the solar god. We'd so blotchy, I'm sorry, in mid-December by decorating a pot with blue and red feathers to represent the god. In the ritual, the pot was broken and the fruits of the season and other edibles were shared. So life was meant to grow out of destruction. This message has been a driving force behind Mr. B Baby's uh artwork. And has defined Chucho, who is a symbol of hope, resilience, and compassion, as Chucho is always growing uh from his experiences. And so here are the mural options that she presented. She actually gave us four. And the first option, the city council saw it uh at its meeting in October of twenty twenty two, including the second option. And as you can see here, uh, the first one, option one, is the original rendering uh with the uh lowrider cars and Chucho and his Maria in it. And so we're paying homage to Route one eleven, and we're welcoming people to the city of. The Coachella. Uh, option two is Chucho sending love notes to his Maria in Mexico. And so this was the original painting that was going to be featured on the US Postal Service building. And as you can see, it's very whimsical. It has a little place mark where it puts Coachella on the map. Um, it is one of staff's favorites. Uh, so these two are staff's favorites. Um, and this next one, oh, I wonder what happened to option four. Uh, option three, uh, this is a uh Chucho um celebrating Coachella and uh, and please know that. This was a very rough sketch, and so the word Coachella would be written in different lettering. Uh, she indicated that it would be written in in this style, uh, where it says welcome, like those letters that are a little more clear uh to see. Um, that, that's how that would be written there, and so basically, the option for mural. Is essentially the same mural. I apologize, I'm not sure what happened um to the image. Let me see if it's somewhere else, no. Uh, but it's basically the same mural except minus the Coachella banner, and it has a grapefruit tree in the center of Chucho and Maria. And so basically, everything else, all the other elements are there except for the tree in the center, and it's a grapefruit uh tree. So that would have been option four, so I apologize that somehow it got cut off. And the budget for this mural uh remains at sixteen thousand dollars, which was uh in alignment with the other requests as well. And this covers installation costs such as labor, uh, equipment rental, and other material costs and insurance. And that is, that this concludes our presentation. Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Do you guys have any comments or questions?
I can see why she was gonna do option two in the post office, but I think option one in this scenario in this location. Is really pretty and it really gives a homage, especially to Route one eleven. It makes it, it's pretty and. Yeah, the the Chucho is very um. It's very catchy. Character.
He sure is. He's, he's definitely uh very unique, and he uh is also paying homage to our um Aztec roots, because apparently the. The feathers uh were from a blue bird, and then I guess they also use red feathers. I actually looked this up and it's it's true, uh, because I was wondering, Michelle, why did you choose a red and blue or whatever, and why does he look furry? And she told me, oh, he's a piñata, so.
The only question, where is the, what funding are we using for this particular mural?
The art, art, yeah, yes, that account.
And the other thing is, um, so I see she's, so she's from Sandy, she's from the San Diego area?
Yeah, she's from the San Diego area, and she's since relocated to Los Angeles uh to be closer to other opportunities, but she's definitely. Um, available to go all over the state or other parts of the country.
That's great. Um. When. Part of the question, whenever we have like artists like her, do they come forward? Do we put out an RFP? What is the process? How do we get folks interested in doing art in the city?
Uh, yes, we do. Uh, we are gonna have an RFP process uh coming up actually for some additional art murals. And other artwork. Uh, and so in 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 her case, uh, she submitted an application, so it was just, you know, it was unsolicited. And she submitted an application, and uh, because people can submit an application, so she did, and uh. So she did not respond to like a formal RFP, but we will have, you know, obviously in the future. A- anything that that we consider will go through an RFP process.
So this option, say, um, the options that we have here, one, two, three, and then four. They would go in the location that you mentioned, Anaya's Auto Repair?
Yes.
And how was that location uh chosen?
It was chosen be uh because uh, so as you know, as you might realize, uh, the city of Coachella does not have that many walls. Where people are willing to allow you to install a mural. So Mr. Anaya, uh, he gave us his permission to. Go ahead and install a mural and I, you know, so so he's given us his formal permission to do that. And he's one of the few that have actually um allowed us to to do that, because believe it or not, some some other people are not. Too crazy about it, or they have other plans for their building, like the US Postal Service uh gentleman. Uh, he has other plans, and so he didn't want to um have a mural installed just yet, but he said he was open to having one installed in the future.
Okay, and I know you mentioned her, uh. I guess, uh, submission, it was unsolicited. We weren't really looking for anything to, have we had any other? Artists submit their work?
Yes, yes, we have. We've had plenty, uh, many actually, and uh. Uh, and so her, hers went through the art and culture, the the arts and culture.
They already went through the process.
Yes.
Okay, those are my only questions. Thank you.
And and just to bounce off that, you know, our municipal code allows for different procurement processes for art. When I can say that the kid, some, we can solicit applications, some RFPs. Uh, the wings was solicited the same way, the the applicant was in the area from Colorado and did four murals throughout the Coachella Valley. Uh, you know, sometimes we get to be opportunistic without, with our options. This gentleman gave us a good, uh, let us use this building. It's right there on. Great for Boulevard, two-story building, very attractive. Another one that's gonna come through with the RFP is the Frontier Building. They actually gave us permission to. Put a mural there, so we've been wanting to put a mural there for the last eight years. So when the RP comes out, we will get good look art artists to, you know, give us a rendering for that one, so. This is one of those opportunities that, you know, is presented, and we wanted to be proactive and move on it.
That's great. Yeah, I think for like the RFPs, like you just mentioned, for that location coming up. I think it would be really great. I don't know what the process looks like, but. It would be great for us to really try to capture maybe some local artists so that they could also showcase some of their work. Um, and just give them the opportunity and let them know, you know, this is what's available to them too. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Is there an option that you? Prefer or that? I think option, I mean, I can't see option number four. I can.
You know, it really is.
It's the same as option three, but.
Yes, except with the grapefruit uh tree in the center instead of the Coachella banner, and that's the only difference. And then she did include. Uh, now that I recall, she did include that little red car that you see up at the corner. It would be in option four on the same side, and yeah. Because she was trying to give you guys options where she would include like a grapefruit tree and then the car, and so, but it's exactly like this one. So I apologize.
Okay. It's so cute. Uh, thank you. I, I like all four, but I think the one that looks. Like the clearest, like it looks very, very good, very consistent. I think it's option number one. I I would prefer seeing that one, but I don't know what the council. And the budget, is that something she submitted, the artist?
Yes.
Okay, have, did we compare that to other murals? Um, the budget that was submitted?
Uh, yes, we did. Actually, uh, her budget is pretty sound. Uh, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. So when we're talking about, um, you know, the the way the murals are, are coming through, that's actually something that I have. Um, a lot of criticism of.
a lot of criticism of since, since I got on council. So basically, the way it's set up, and it's, it's not set up this way. It's left for interpretation. Nowhere in the program does it say that you can come through without an RFP. Nowhere in there. Nowhere in there does it say that anybody can just come through and pick a wall and then one, one artist come through. Nowhere does it say that. And that's where I had an issue with, and I brought this up to the city attorney as well, because that's what it is. It's left for interpretation. It's left to manipulate it to the way you want for it to come through. It's the reality. And so I've always had an issue with that. Secondly, a second criticism that I have is that exactly that, it doesn't leave an option for other artists to submit a rendering. And so it, not only does it limit, you know, the murals that we see coming through, but it also limits the applicants. And when I, when I drive through the city of Coachella, there are a lot of residential communities that have a mural, you know, that wasn't approved, that someone, somewhere, you know, just put it up and drew it on a wall. And they're murals that shouldn't be in those residential communities. And so I've always had an issue with not doing an RFP and allowing those local artists to provide a rendering and, you know, showcase their art in a way that is going through the process and then also, you know, get paid to do it. You know, it's a lot of work. So, so that's where we initiated, where this, we're gonna, I think it's gonna go back to the Art Commission, or they're looking at what the framework is gonna look like to eliminate the process that we have now.
Yes, we, we developed a mural toolkit modeled after other agencies that have exemplary mural art programs. And so that's what's taking a minute with the release of the RFP, because we're being very comprehensive. And we want to make sure that the RFP is featured in, you know, on sites that make the most sense and that appeal the local and other people from other parts of the state or nation. But yeah, we definitely wanna, you know, appeal to our local artist community.
And just to point information, the, again, the municipal code, it's section four point four six point zero nine. And it gives you B, B three, four options. It's direct purchase, direct commission, limited competition, and open competition. So there's different options to procure our work.
Also, I, I read it. I read it in depth. And even the cert attorney said it was left for interpretation. There's no clear saying where that, exactly that, that you can have one person. You know, basically, any of you here, you know, can come through, pick a wall, go to that owner, say, hey, can we put a mural there? It's gonna be completely paid for. And then, you know, you reach out to an artist and bring that artist forward. That was, there was really no process in place. And so I don't think that the program or the municipal code was left basically that vague to allow anybody to just come through and say, all right, we're gonna pick this wall and we're gonna put this mural, and that's it. It's not open for anywhere else. So I'm hoping, you know, that moving forward, that we strategize a bit more when it comes to the planning and that the Arts Commission is making recommendations of where they would like to see a mural. And then ask those owners if they would allow a mural to go through or be added to their wall. You know, and then put the RFP out and then let us get, you know, different renderings where, you know, that, that we can choose from. And it's also putting through the criteria. So I see these beautiful, this is one of my favorite murals that have come through and I've seen. I think most of them, but it also leaves where it leaves the Art Commission to be more specific in what they wanna see come through, the criteria. What do they wanna see that we don't have, you know, in the downtown? And whether it's in a mural, you know, we have to start thinking outside of murals. We hear a lot from our community that they're, you know, growing a bit tiresome of seeing the murals come through over and over. They would like some different type of art to be showcased. So I'm hoping that the Art Commission will be able to, you know, target all those different things that, you know, our residents have been wanting to see. As far as the options, I, you know, I spent a lot of time with Kittles. And I personally like, you know, number two and number three. I know that it's not, you know, considering that it's, what is it, a towing?
Yes.
I know probably it's not ideal or match with the, with the business. But I like very family-oriented type of murals where parents can take their kids and enjoy it. And, and so for me, it would be, you know, two or three. And they're very vibrant and they make me happy. You know, when Chucho is sending his love letters to his Maria, you know, there's something sweet and innocent and kind about it. It makes me happy when I see it. So for me, it would be options two or three. What direction are you looking from us today?
I'm looking for which option would the council like to select.
Did we consider maybe taking it out and allowing some of the residents to choose? Did we consider that?
We, we, we have to be conscientious of scheduling too, right? So that's gonna get hot soon. We want her to start painting as soon as possible. And around, you know, April, May starts getting hot. So we wanted, it was supposed to go in the original building at the post office. The owner backed out after giving us his consent. Now he backed out, so this is alternate site B. So we, you know, she's waiting to come and paint before the summer starts. So doing that would prolong it. It probably won't come till the fall.
Yeah. I, I do, I would like to see. I mean, maybe it's not for, for this one, for timeline, for the deadline. But I would like to see more interaction from our community members. I would like to see what they, you know, feel. Because art is supposed to make us feel a certain way. And so, you know, moving forward, I would like to incorporate that in the timeline, is that, you know, we open it up to our community and maybe they can give us some insight about what they would like and not just, you know, I feel a lot of pressure to decide on one option for, you know, forty-two thousand plus residents. So if, if you're looking for feedback, you know, mine would be two or three.
Did the Arts Commission have a say? Which option did they go with again?
Uh, they, they approved both actually, and they brought it to the city council for, for the council to.
So they went with option one and two?
So, does council want to go with, with one?
I'm honestly, it's, they're both beautiful. I don't think we, I don't think we have to stay too long on this kind of.
I'd go with two. It's just gonna make more. This is gonna catch people's eyes, because I, I think, better go back and if you're gonna drive down eighty-six, the car once is gonna get lost and they're gonna think it's part of the, because it's an auto place and it'll get lost. That art be like, oh, look, there's something there, so that'll make them stop. So that, yes. Two and three would also make people stop, because it'd be like, it'll be different. So.
You don't have very many family type of murals, so is everybody okay with option two?
Yeah, we're, we don't need to spend too much. Let's move forward. Option two is great. Yeah. And then just a quick question. I, I'm done with this item, but still staying on the RFPs and that whole process. Do we have a list perhaps of maybe property owners, buildings that would consider perhaps having some kind of art already show, being showcased? Like, is there a way for them to like, sign up somewhere and say, hey, if, you know, something were to come through, I'd be interested in having something on, in my building. Do we have a list or anything?
You know, we, staff did canvas some of the business owners where, you know, it makes sense to, so, so we do have a list of people that have told us. I'm willing, I, yes, perfect. But no, I don't have like, I, I did, I don't have like a formal list, you know.
Okay.
But yes, we do have at least four walls where people have told us, yes, go ahead. And so we're like, okay, I think that's plenty. And, but we're definitely looking at other options. And that's gonna come through with our art study that's, that's been approved. So I just have to release that as well. So we do have an RFP that's gonna come up also for an art feasibility study that's going to be very comprehensive, look at art in the city of Coachella. So it'll look at, you know, sculpture, it'll look at just different kinds of arts. And, and just what can we do here in the city of Coachella to spur economic development? Because through the arts, you, you can, you know, spur a whole lot of economic development. If you think about the French Quarter in New Orleans, or like even in New York, you know, there's, you know, so, so we can definitely make it like a place-making type of, of thing. And so that's what we're hoping to do. But it does take a little time and a lot of effort on our part to put these, these conscientious documents out there. And so I apologize, it's taking a little, a little while, but, you know, I, I don't wanna put anything out there that is not perfect.
Yeah, I think, I think something that maybe even the Arts Commission can take on is, is having that. Is really thinking through what would be some places throughout the city of Coachella where some of this art could be placed. And it's just having that plan ahead of time so that we know, in case anything were to come our way. Because we can plan as much as we want, but sometimes things are gonna come our way and we have to act quickly. And so I think having that ahead of time would be incredibly useful. So hopefully, you know, staff considers to, to maybe work with the Arts Commission.
They'll definitely be a part of it. They're gonna be at the forefront of those efforts with the art study. So, and we're gonna also involve other community stakeholders, you know, schools, artists, the youth, just everyone. So it'll be a very comprehensive, community-engaged type of process. So we are looking forward to that. And yeah.
Thank you so much.
And with that, there's a consensus, there are a motion.
I should approve the art in public places mural by Michelle Guerrero and the amount of sixty thousand for option two.
Is there a second? I'll second. Thank you. Uh, roll call, Carlos?
Councilmember Dr. Figueroa?
Aye.
Councilmember Virgen?
Aye.
Councilmember Delgado?
Yes, thank you, Selena. And then now we're moving back up to with the item eleven? Yes. And then we can call the mayor back for this one? Yes, Carlos?
Correct, yes. He just said, standing on item ten and thirteen.
Okay.
With the proximity, correct. Well, we really hope you guys solve the city problems or opportunities. Gabriel, I see your appearance. What item are we on? Oh, number eleven. Run number eleven?
Yes.
Cool. So you guys just took both items simultaneously on?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Hey, thank you, member, mayor and councilmembers. Gabriel Bettis, your Development Service Director. I'll make this brief. This is a resolution to approve an intent to annex the Placita or Suerta Apartments Phase One into the Citywide CFD for Public Safety. So this project would be annexed into the CFD. It's a hundred and ten unit multifamily project, so Phase One would first be annexed to CFD. And then Phase Two would follow. Phase One is fifty-six units. On December eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, the council did approve a repayment and loan agreement with the applicant for the CFD. And this is a picture aerial of the Phase One, and it's currently under construction. And the depiction of Phase One on a site plan. So there's four different buildings that are under construction at the moment. The elevations for the project. So what you're doing here is you're setting up public hearing to for that election, which would be April twenty-sixth of two thousand and twenty-three. So staff recommends that the council adopt the resolution before you and set that hearing date for April twenty-sixth. That's the end of my staff report. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I'll move approval of this item. Is there a second? Second, there is a second. Can we get a roll call? Is there no, no questions? Councilmember Dr. Figueroa?
Aye.
Councilmember Virgen?
Aye.
Councilmember Delgado?
Yes.
And Mayor Hefnantes.
I will move on to item number eleven. This is to authorize the city manager to submit an application to Riverside County Transportation Commission for SB two eighty-one bike and pedestrian call for projects.
All right, who's going?
Good evening, council. Hi, the item before you, there has been a call for projects as identified in the title of the item as it pertains to bicycle pedestrians facility, it's called for projects. And all of the projects that qualify for this are primarily focused at bicycle lanes, essentially their maintenance, planning, education, type of related items related to this. The, the call for projects was made, it closes on April twenty-seventh. The award will be noticed early June, June, early summer with a project start, start time of July first and the project completion that would need to happen by July first of two thousand and twenty-six. Staff's recommendation for submittal to this call for projects is to do the maintenance essentially for all existing green bike lanes along the Arteria corridor corridors of Grapefruit Boulevard and Sasa Chavez. To redo all of those, the estimated project cost is currently estimated at the total of, that you see below there, which is the eight hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. The grant request would be the six ninety, six hundred and ninety thousand, one hundred and twenty. And we are recommending a match of twenty-five percent, which gets more, more points basically towards the scores available for this submittal. And with that, that's complete my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions.
My son had a couple of questions. I imagine that maintenance is ineligible.
It is.
Okay.
And this is a rare opportunity and being as you see how much it would cost to, to service them. And this is a great opportunity to save almost eight hundred thousand dollars of maintenance cost.
Did you think of, of upgrading these lines or these lanes to maybe like a class three? Or a class two? Maybe that's an accurate question, but you know, there are ways to make it even more pedestrian-friendly, such as adding curves, et cetera.
So that would increase the cost?
Sure.
And the max that we can ask for is a six ninety? So then we would be taking that from. Yes.
Okay, cool. Makes sense. Is there a motion approved?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second. Can we get a roll call, please? Councilmember Dr. Figueroa?
Aye.
Councilmember Virgen?
Aye.
Councilmember Delgado?
Yes.
And Mayor Hefnantes.
I will move on now to item fourteen. This is approve the grant pathway development internship program for One Future Coachella Valley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, your councilmembers. The item before you is brought forward to you by Mayor Proctem Galarza and Councilmember Virgen to start a, to work with One Future Coachella Valley to do a government pathway development internship program for the city of Coachella. It's a two-year program that will work with, using this nonprofit to recruit and find college applicant students that would be interested in working in government. One of the issues that we have is with the current market is recruiting for new students that wanna be in government. A lot of people don't know that government is a great career with different aspects of engineering, parks and reg, management, utilities, law enforcement. So we figured that this will be a good use of ARPA funds. This project will be ARPA-funded. It has two options. If you see the staff report, one for ninety-six thousand and one for a hundred and seven thousand, which would qualify for the earmark of workforce development portion of our ARPA funds. Sheila and Ernie, I think they're available. Can you invite them? They will be providing the, the presentation. I think they'll show their screen, that they'll be writing the framework on how they plan to implement this program for us and how it looks in the next two years.
You know, before we allow Sheila or Ernie to make any comments, I'm gonna allow Councilmember Virgen to make some comments on this item. Since Councilmember Nestali Galarsa is not here, we're, we're odd that the rest of the council is probably gonna claim that we introduced this to.
Thank you, mayor. I, so we brought this item forward, Mayor Proctem, Natalie Galarsa and I. And we met, we had a great meeting with Sheila and Ernie with One Future. We think it's a great opportunity for us to be able to use these funds. We know that internship opportunities are really important for our students. We know that it allows them the opportunity to get that work experience. Um, we know that it allows them the opportunity to get that work experience. Um, it allows them to learn more about a city and how it functions. And for a lot of these students, it's, um. It allows them a, a stipend and so they're able to utilize that. So. They're not only getting the work experience that they need and they could use later in, in their careers. Add to their resumes, but they're also, uh, getting a stipend which would help them a lot. So we thought it was really important to be able to do this, um, and bring in a few interns into the city. Uh, the opportunity is great for the city as well because it would allow maybe a couple of departments to. Have, you know, a couple of extra interns and help them out with whatever activities or projects that they have. Um, we feel it's a win-win. It's a win for the city and our staff. And then it's also. A great learning opportunity for our students. And so we're really excited to bring this forward and we hope that the council is able to, um, approve this.
Thank you. And then now you look forward to, uh, Sheila or Ernie.
She's muted.
Hello all.
Hi.
We can hear you.
Hey, I'm going, going to share the screen. Pardon me for being slow and. Technically challenged. I may not be sharing the right one. Hold on. Okay, can you see that?
Yes.
Uh, for some reason it's not advancing though. Okay, let me see if I can get back.
To advance, okay.
I'm just going to get back to the beginning here. Oops, I'm so sorry. Let me stop and turn it on again. I'm not the best at this, so. I, but, uh, Ernie and I agreed I would do it. So hold on just a second.
Sheila, would you like me to share the, the screen and I can advance?
Yes, thank you. I'm so sorry, guys. So I'll, I'll just say thank you very much for letting us be here today, um, and for considering this. It's been, uh, really a delight to work with. Um, uh, your city manager and, uh, with Stephanie and with Neft, Neftali on kind of envisioning this. And, um. Uh, and also I want to thank you for letting us come in by Zoom. We've had a series of Zoom meetings pretty much back to back. All day since eight this morning. So that, um, I appreciate it. The last time we were there, we were there in person. And I, we'd love to be there in person, but this really worked, uh, well for the schedule today. Um, and so this all came out of a discussion that we had with, um. With, uh, Gabriel Neftali and with, um, with Stephanie on the, the question of. Um, how we think about government pathways and attracting students into government pathways. And more importantly, getting more students exposed to the kind, to, to the opportunities that are available in government pathways. And, um, and thinking about how we use the regional plan platform, the work that we've built across the last seventeen years. To feed to, uh, on, on multiple levels. To assure that students have the exposure they need earlier on, but, uh, and think about what the, the best current point of contact is. And so the, the project is set within what, uh, I think a number of you are familiar with, which is called. The Coachella Valley Regional Plan for College and Career Success. It's about. Uh, really spotlighting how educational attainment is a driver of economic mobility for our students. And it's also about assuring that more students from our local, uh, communities. Have the opportunity to get the education and training they need to get into higher wage positions. To be, be in leadership ultimately and to be decision makers to frame the future of the Coachella Valley. And so, um, when we talk about this internship project, it's about a project, but it's a project set in the broader. Context of really thinking about how we, uh, get to, um. Uh, a sustainable structure for supporting students into those kinds of pathways. So next slide. There you go. Okay, so, uh, I, I can just go briefly through these. We think of the students in our K- twelve system. And in our, our, uh, colleges locally as the future workforce. And we're very mindful of the conditions that are affecting our students and that are obstacles to them. Around getting into pathways that lead to, um, economic mobility. And, uh, and so, uh, all of the work that we do is. Uh, designed to assure that we give students the kinds of support services. They need to progress along the pathway, especially, uh, that we have a high, high population of students who are living in poverty. Uh, significant, uh, student, um, population of students who are underrepresented in. Government pathways, in healthcare careers, in higher level professions. So we're mindful of that and all of our strategies are work around that. Next slide. Uh, we're also mindful of, uh, the need for the Coachella Valley to understand the need for. Increasing educational attainment. And by college and post-secondary, we are thinking of anything. After high school that will get a student on the path to a meaningful job. And so we've got a long haul to make sure that our community is, is competitive. Um, and that our students are, uh, ready for the jobs of the future and that they can lead and that, that is, is driving our work. Next slide. Um, and so our vision, this, this proposal really does fit within the vision of One Future Coachella Valley. Driving, uh, the region to develop an educated community. Um, a talented workforce from within our own student population, making sure that we're inclusive in our leadership and planning. Uh, because we do this work not just through one nonprofit, which is One Future, but we incorporate. Um, a whole cross-section of partners who are thinking about how best to support our students and think about, uh. And, and align resources around that, the, that goal. And then, uh, ultimately economic opportunity for local residents. Next slide. And then I wanted to say that when we had the discussion with, um, your team, we were really thinking about the. Um, we, we, One Future has to think about things in terms of like systemic change and programmatic change. So. So we lead programs that get the services that are needed and place the students in the, for instance, in the internships. But we also are committed to making sure that we're developing systems where students have the long-term opportunities to do this. So. We were very open to this discussion because of your, uh, leadership's, uh, desire to. Uh, make sure that you have a sustaining structure for internships instead of just one-offs where students get the experience. But there isn't, um, there isn't like a, a deliberate feed. That necessarily and a structure and sustainable structure to make that happen for the long run. So that's how our work, uh, happens. And that's what we, we prioritize in the work that we do. Uh, and I'll just go on past that, that slide with this. Again, I said, this is all part of a regional plan context. And we'll go right on to, uh, the next slide. Okay, so one of the strategies that we employ, we have multiple that work. Uh, to assure that there are expanded opportunities for local students. To both be prepared at the K- twelve level for college and careers. Have the kind of college and financial aid assistance that they need to enroll in college or post-secondary programs. Um, get the, the supports they need to be successful there. But then also, we're really mindful of the top of the pipeline. What, what does it take to get them back here? Um, for the students in the Coachella Valley who have received a scholarship from us or have participated in our programs and have a degree. They have really, they do not have significant problems finding a job. Um, it's those who have not gotten to the point where they've completed some, some experiential learning or a degree. That do have trouble matching with a job. So we, what we want to do is be sure that we return the students to the region. And that's why we started out, um, the, this partnership with an organization called HCC. Where we place undergraduate interns into full-time paid jobs during the summer. And, um, this is a platform and a partnership that has worked wonderfully. The initial intent for it. Was around assuring that we are, uh, our goal of increasing. Workforce diversity and health, higher level health professions was met. And it offers the opportunity for a student who's away at a college outside of the area or a student who is here in the valley. Um, to come back during the summer and work here, be paid and be sure that, um, they have an experience right here in the workplace. Uh, and so, uh, we, to date, we have placed two hundred and seventy-four, uh, students in internships. Uh, about nine hundred thirteen thousand in wages. This next summer, it looks like we'll place, uh, uh, close to thirty students. And the large majority of these students are offered jobs in their, their placement sites. So it's a proven model that's been in place for eleven years. And this is what we're suggesting as Phase One for the work. Next slide. And so the city of Coachella's concept here, I think, I wa, I want to point out that I, this is really a leadership move. Uh, we have heard from other cities that they are having, they do have trouble attracting, uh, interns and. And making a match between the local talent, those who have, have undergraduate degrees and those who. And, and their placement back into the community. Um, and so we've heard it from other cities, but no one really has come forth with a. Uh, proposal to work on this, both by placing interns in the next couple of summers. But also thinking about a sustainable structure and building out a sustaining structure that could be applicable for other regions. And offer more opportunity to more students from the Coachella Valley. Next slide. And so there, this, this, uh, proposal, uh, after numerous discussions with your team. Uh, came, we settled on a few phases. One is to like get immediately out there. Identify six students across the next two summers, place them in full-time paid internships, test out how well that works, work with city. Um, department, uh, directors and to make the match between their needed projects and the student interns. Uh, and then, uh, parallel to that, work with your city leadership on. What, how this structure can work and how we expand upon it and make it up, potentially make it available. Um, in a year-round structure. So Phase One would be placing those students. Uh, immediately placing six students into internships. And I will point out on this one, I, I, um. Uh, Gable pointed out that we had, we suggested two tiers of funding of stipends for the students. The typical stipends in the past have been four thousand dollars for a, a full summer internship. We talked about increasing that and, uh, your team, uh, responded with, uh, really pushing the limits on it. So that these internships are, are available to students so that they are competitive with. Other jobs that are made available to the, and, and better than other jobs that are made available to them in fast food and even Amazon. We want to be deliberate about and committed to the economic path for the students and. Most of the students who are taking these internships have to work during the summer in order to put, uh, to pay for college and to support their families. So the concept of pushing that stipend up is a leadership position. And I will just say that. Um, the suggested, the option two, which gets them to an eight thousand dollar stipend would be, um, the highest paid in the Coachella Valley. And but it also triggered our thinking and our request for, for other partners who are doing these internships. So we now increase the stipend, um, this summer to six thousand for students in, in other positions. And we are pushing it forward, uh, higher in future years as a result of this conversation. So I thank you for that. Next slide. Phase one point five is affirm the internship priorities and structure within the Coachella's staff. Um, offering those six internships and making sure that students set objectives that, that they are on projects that are specifically. Designed to, um, meet a need, an unmet need in the city of Coachella, but also give the student the experience they need. Um, to explore the career and potentially become an employee. Um, and doing preceptor training, training and other work that we do with the, with the staff. Next slide. Um, and then Phase Two is working with the city of Coachella and other interested cities in developing a K- sixteen government pathways pipeline. As I said, we have been approached by other cities, but they have not really put any meat around it. So this discussion is. Early in and pretty innovative. And, uh, I want to say I'm grateful for your leadership on it. Um, because we're talking about how we can make this work well in the city of Coachella, how it can be very responsive to students, but also. Um, uh, meet the city's needs and then potentially be re, replicable in other areas. Thank you very much for your attention and thanks for your patience with my.
Any questions, council?
So just some, some questions I have, um, here. Uh, are you able to break down more on the like future workforce that would come from, you know, just the city unified school district and the, um. From Coachella specifically, what you would see, you know, what metrics you could look at that information. Um, you know, to be able to showcase to us. Right, where that, with, with that, with that outcome is right, with the, with the projected workforce is going to come out of Coachella in the next couple of years. Um, so something you can talk about that in, in any way. Um, and what, you know, I was looking at the funding, you know, it's really, really, you know, I'm familiar with the HCC Healthcare Career Connections Program. Um, and you're talking about, you know, the outcome of people getting that job. And so. Uh, do you have numbers on how many students that come from Coachella or just the Eastern Coachella Valley as a whole? Um, and who really, you know. Gets into those programs, what their background is, um. And really what, you know, kind of what that outcome, what year are they in college or the sophomores or are they all through the different specific? Um, years in college, what year they're technically in, in unit wise, because people are non-traditional students sometimes. And also i, is this, you know, how competitive is this to non-traditional college students? Who might, you know, be, you know, going back to school and looking to go into local government, but they aren't your traditional eighteen to twenty-four year olds. Uh, because I think a, a big issue is a lot of programs focus on traditional eighteen to twenty-four year old age college students. And we forget about our non-traditional students, uh, because we do have a large population of adult learners. And so what does that look like? Um, in that perspective there. And then if you can clarify on the costs. Um, you know, you have a twenty thousand dollar project management and what does that entail on boat, you know, in a different sense and. And just to make sure, you know, looking at the, the hourly wage, you know, for the eight thousand dollar one, it'd be about twenty dollars an hour, right, or so. For the, um, uh, for, uh, for the work that people are doing. And so, um, how would that compare to? You know, kind of on the work level of stuff and, and other, uh, government agencies, you know, not within the area, but that have internships. So just some of my questions there. I know those are a lot of questions, but it's just kind of a.
I think those are good questions. Uh, let, let's start with the admin fee. Um, you're, it. Kind of feels like you're at a forty percent administration fee. Kind of high for a nonprofit, don't you think? But. It lets, uh, how did you get up to, to forty percent admin fee?
So, uh, we, I, maybe I didn't articulate this properly. We, we really don't think of this as just administration. Administration for six internships. We frame this as a partnership with the city to structure an intern, a government pathways. Um, projects, so pipeline project, meaning, um, utilizing the existing, uh, infrastructure on the regional plan. Uh, to embed career pathways in, uh, government pathways into the work that we're doing with the K- twelve school districts. And exploring how we make that happen so that there's a feeder early on. Um, to expose students, we have a hundred and, uh. Roughly a hundred students at any given point in time that are, that are involved in one or another of our Bridge to Careers. Services. So provide exposure to students, uh, around government pathways and embed that into the existing. Uh, structures that the existing work, uh. Workshops and, uh, offerings that One Future Coachella Valley provide to students throughout the year. So we have a leadership. Series, we have a mid-year, uh, networking mixer, and then we have, uh, bridge to career panels that we. Integrate. So the concept is to bring in government pathways into that. And then also to. Uh, work with the city to define what the needs are in, what the career pathways are in government pathways and. Uh, determine what it looks like to, uh, to scale this in a way that is beyond just the six internships. We knew that we couldn't define all that in the first six months. But, so that's why we, we, but we frame this as two phase, one point one. And one point five and two phases, which is all about. Making sure that we get this moving, that we test out the existing HCC structure and relationship. But we're using that as like a Petri dish for how we frame the, the long-term structure. And, um, that means that. Uh, we have roughly six staff who touch on this at any given point in time. Um, and who impact, uh, who are, who are working at some level to. And would be working at some level to integrate government pathways into, um, into the work of the regional plan.
So are you saying that, uh. That these six interns would be part of. One Futures kind of wraparound. Programs and services. Now, are these new students of that hundred that you have? Or, or these existing students of a hundred that you have?
It could be both and, and it can be to answer the non-traditional, it could be non-traditional students as well. So we.
Well, I, 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 I'm trying to figure out what's our objective here and, and I don't want to go like everywhere. Um, if the, if the objective is to get college-bound students into. Government internships to give them work experience. I think that's great. If the objective is to get non-traditional students. Wha, what does that mean? Those people that are not in college that are interested in the. wh- what does that mean? Those people that are not in college, that are interested in a career pathway? Or, or how are you defining that? I, I, I'm just curious.
Non-traditional in our definition is students that aren't just seniors going into college and graduating in four to six years. So it could be somebody who started a degree and wants to finish a degree. So we do have, I was, I was making the comment that it is about a two and four-year degree for us if we're thinking about the posit, the positions that you're trying to fill. Um, but I, I, I was thinking more in terms of age for non-traditional students.
Okay. And then the council member you had, um, so you, you talked about, we talked about non-tradition, we talked about the admin fee, but it's not an admin fee, it's more like a wraparound, wrap, kind of pro- programmatic fee. You know, there was one more question.
And you know, I think the other question was more on the component of the kind of the numbers, right? So how many students have gone to your HCC program, come from, from Coachella and, you know, that component? And how many do you think are gonna, if, if of those six, you know, how many are gonna be local or, you know, within the Eastern Coachella Valley? A aspect, because I know people are going to get placed all over, because sometimes people want to go to somewhere else. So that I'm not, you know, stipulating anything like that, but it's more, what, what do you expect? Or what do you, what are your outcomes based on other placements?
So the goal can be to have City of Coachella students be the primary feed if you have enough applicants for it. The reality is that you do, uh, what, what we can do is look at the data to cut it by what percentage of them have come from Coachella. I can tell you from our scholar data right off the top of my head, I think City of Coachella residents are of the third highest number of scholarship recipients. So this probably tracks pretty closely because oftentimes the feed for the, the internships are from our own scholar applicants, probably sixty percent of the time.
So, so real quick and, and I'm going to ask Bill and probably uh Selena. ARPA has requirements and ARPA basically says that those dollars need to be spent within the city confines and to either in city businesses, people, et cetera. So you cannot take a, a student that's outside of our city limits and, and give offer in this internship. You would have to use we're, we're trying to avoid audits too on those ARPA money. So it would have to be students that are from Coachella and I would think maybe work in an internship within the city of Coachella, I'm hoping.
That, that's the goal, make them internships here at the city. True, because we use contractors that aren't from the city when we do construction projects. I think if council wishes to make this solely for Coachella's students, we, we can make that requirement here now. Um, but the way I understand we took the DARPA funds was that we just took the lump sum and it's at the discretion of council, correct?
Well, let's, let's think about that, because didn't we offer uh a program where we uh help their most vulnerable and we put the criteria that they be from the city of Coachella. Why would we want to offer this program to anyone outside?
You definitely can make that requirement.
That's important that this program be tailored to Coachella students.
Um, Gabriel, for our current internship program. What do you, I know that I've asked you quite a bit of questions as far as the internship program and the um intern that we have currently. Um, and so what program did you or do you have in effect now?
Um, I think Sandy sent it to you. I, I don't recall top of my head uh what it entails, but I think it, you know, she's in that to, to you and then I can send that to the rest of the council. I think it's uh people submit an application and then we notify departments to see if they need uh help. And then if that's the case, then we, you know, we bring them in and either do an informal, informal interview. Sometimes we just bring them in because we love the need and they go through the background process and we keep them in. This one would be more inclined with working with a nonprofit that would vet out uh ser- search uh implement and, you know, kind of monitor the interns while they work at the city and giving us more ou- outcomes on, on their, on their goals and, and strategies as, as they try to implement those things. But uh, we know we are, our current internship program is pretty general. It's not, you know, we, whenever we need interns, we, we go out there, ask or whenever people apply, we, we, we see if there's a need at the moment. But something that we've been trying to talk about for a few years, I know other council members, I wanted to do this. Uh, and you know, we have the ARPA funding for that. So this would be a good pilot runner for the next two years to see if we can try to implement.
I guess I should have been more specifically. So um, you said that you had something in mind for bringing additional interns. So is this what you had in mind or did you have something else of what you wanted to bring in?
And I didn't have anything in particular. We were just open to different models, different uh, uh, you know, methodologies. We, right now, there was nothing particularly what I wanted. I think other council members in the past wanted to do something and we were trying to figure out either just to, you know, so you can just recruit like a regular position, have a nonprofit implemented for us. So there are different options, but we never really came down to a specific criteria.
I mean, I like the idea of internships and, I mean, I, I like that, you know, it's, you guys are op- uh, offering those wraparound services. Um, I guess my only concern is what happens for those who are already graduates? Is there internship opportunities for them?
Yes, we've sort of pushed the envelope with uh HCC and we have, we have placed students who are immediately um just finished uh their undergraduate degree because it made sense. So there are, there is not like a regulation around that with this partnership. We just, we do what we need to do to make sure that we get the relevant student in the right spot. Um, there are also, as a result of this, um, so when we talk about wraparound services, I also want to make the point, we also think in terms of like intersegmental services. So while we use this as a primary objective for undergraduate internships, so that we can catch the student before they graduate college and get picked up by another region uh in a job, because they're competitive at that point. We want, we also uh think about this in terms of what other opportunities that student's going to need. So we have a lot of interns from this cohort and who were interns and scholarship recipients, as I said. But also we're, we're scholarshipsing them as graduate students. Um, we're stretching now our work to be sure, to look at how we can support them into even higher level professions in healthcare, because we're finding that they need that support as well. So this is one one sort of step on the pipeline, um, but it opens opportunities for, for things after. Um, you know, supports after the pipe, that this step in the pipeline.
Okay. Uh, I'm just curious, so what, what's minimum wage, Gabriel?
I think seventeen right now.
Okay, so if, if I'm doing my numbers right, this, and based off of option one, we're, we're, we're proposing to pay them less than minimum wage at fifteen forty-one an hour. And I, and I'm taking that as three interns. So there's ten weeks at forty, at, at forty hours per week. That's, that's roughly um let me do the math, what, four hundred?
Around there.
Is that right? So forty times ten. There's four hundred. And at three times three students is uh, what, twelve hundred? That's that, so they'll be working twelve hundred hours, correct? All three students? And then uh, if we take that eighteen hundred, eighteen thousand six hundred stipend?
Can I just interject? I think that was our mistake. We talked about minimum wage and higher. And I think we put in fifteen forty-five instead of seventeen. Um, we did, I, I, that's, that's our mistake. We were talking about those two options. You got it. Thank you. That was us.
I, I think to be fair to the students, we, if we're going to do something like this, we should pay them
Yes.
at least a seventeen forty-five an hour on option one. Um, so it'd be what, twelve hundred times seventeen forty-five?
Sixty-nine eighty per student.
It'd be, it'd be two, two, uh, two hundred, it'd be twenty thousand nine hundred and forty. That'll cover per year. So it'll, it'll go to, the total will be about uh forty-two thousand bucks roughly. And that total down there is going to come out to, call it a hundred thousand bucks. Just so that we can pay those interns the equivalent of what they would get being paid at Starbucks. And by the way, there's great interns in engineering and they need the work experience. And I know some great interns. Actually, I know some people that have, were interns and now work at the city.
Like this will be a little reward. Another question for you, Sheila and Ernie, is you know, um, the state has, the California Student Aid Commission has that new learning aligned employment program, right, that uh, you know, is going to be starting up. And so is that something that you all are looking at to uh work with the local universities here to be able to utilize that um program to be able to place people in the school year and also in the, you know, summer, because you can utilize it. But you know, of course, that's on the student, but um with that, and you know, this different program, but how could we also utilize that, that type of funding um to also pipeline students, uh, because that is any program that is coming out from the, the Student Aid Commission.
Yep, we have begun to explore it. Um, there are some excellent models and I would say that is part, that would be part of our planning process with you all. There are excellent models where through the LEP funding and the LEP structure, where um uh, different industry sectors have specifically embedded the training, you, use the internship process and then sort of wrapped the, the post-secondary degree around that um, and had great success, especially with students who had a higher risk of uh dropping out of their college program. And, and so yes, that would be something that we would explore with this.
And we are, we'll add to that as well. We, we are part of an advisory council that's giving guidance to the California Student Aid Commission on ways that we could successfully implement that type of an internship and fellowship program, not, not only here in the region, but across the state. Uh, in addition, we are working with Cal State, San Bernardino and College of the Desert on their College Corps program, uh, which is a program currently that allows students to intern within work, um specifically here in the region in education. Uh, and then also doing some work that focuses on food insecurity, um specifically through Find Food Bank. Um, but that's, we're, we're looking at ways that we can scale these types of resources and programs to support um more of our students, to give them that opportunity and build that social capital for them.
And full disclosure on it, it's a competitive market even for interns. We actually had a lot of trouble uh locating students who, for the College Corps internships that, those are paid through Cal State San Bernardino, and that was not the easiest task in the world. Um, but we do a lot of outreach for these, for our internships with um the ones that we do in conjunction with HCC and have had relative success. Um, but it is, it's a tight, it's a tight market for, for the workforce. So students have a lot of options.
It, and, and you don't have to do this now, but if, if, if we move forward on this, uh, Ernie or Sheila, it's important that uh you kind of give us a schedule of the wraparound services that you're going to provide and how, and also that the students know that that's going to be a requirement in order to do the internship at the city so that they're exposed to different career pathways, et cetera. And, and then obviously, I would hope that three internships would be here at, at the city of Coachella with the city of Coachella students stipulated. That way we can at least get a visual pathway into this community. A promise to me into this community, into the city. Carlos Compos was an intern. Or, you know, you filmed the council meetings a lot. Now he's a city attorney. Uh, can we get a motion with council? Do you guys, you guys have any more questions?
I'll make a motion to approve it. Uh, thank you to um Dr. Figaro for enlightening us so much in your realm of expertise.
Yeah, as a higher education professional who worked in financial aid before, is a lot of questions on internships and money, so.
Do you agree, uh, council member Doug Dado, that we should make the adjustment for option one? Uh, but reflect the minimum wage.
Yes, absolutely.
So we.
So to, yeah, to adjust it from the, uh, what do you have, like fifteen dollars and forty-four cents?
I think their model is seventeen forty-one to seventeen forty-five. But, and then keep the fees as well as the wraparound program management the same and then both uh Ernie and Sheila will present back to the council through a memo or an email about the wraparound services that the students would need to undertake in order to get this internship and and then we'll go from there. So there's a motion, there's a second council member.
I'll second that.
Any other closing questions? We get a roll call.
Council member Dr. Figador.
Hi.
Council member Ethan.
Hi.
Council member Dangado.
Yes.
And Mayor Hennan Des.
Hi. Well, we'll move on to public comments. Anyone in the public would like to address the city council? Seeing that, we'll bring, bring, go back to council reports of miscellaneous committees. Start to my right.
So, doctor. Yeah, I'll go first. Uh, I've had my um still via vector control, must get a vector control meeting uh this past week. And as well, I was part of the Cal City's fundraising committee, uh, meeting. And so they're looking at having their annual fundraising event, so they're planning on that. Uh, more information comes soon. I also was able to represent City of Coachella for the Cal City's general meeting last Monday. Um, very informative information. They did a presentation about um um, this mayor of Blythe about the closing of the Chukwalla prison and trying to gather support for it to not be um closed and, and instead of switching to close the Norco prison, state prison as opposed to the Chukwalla one in Blythe. As well as uh me and the city manager met last week with Maritza on the equitable cities kickoff meeting. Um, and so we started that, met with the consultant that uh we've retained and um, Maritza's working on some information on getting um um, members and who might be good input for them to be part of that roundtable. And so I definitely um want the rest of the council to see if who they might else have that recommend for that, um, to may have a reach out to Maritza on that and I'm, see, also met with um Coffee with a Cop. Uh, we went with um Lieutenant Vazquez and that was a fun event, uh, even though it was rainy. Um, and then also I received an email today from UC Riverside um Natural Sciences Associate Dean about uh looking for support for um this new program. They're trying to uh gather funding for a community project funding request for a you, for the UCR Coachella Valley Agriculture Research Station. Um, and they're calling it the program they're calling is um some of their letters, sorry. Uh, it's called the Torch. So it's the thermal outreach and research community hub where they want to have up to their classroom size for um research, uh wet labs and, and those items. And they're looking for um support. So I did forward that to the city manager this afternoon. And those are my comments.
Thank you. Uh, council member? Need him?
Thank you. Just a couple for me. Um, on March tenth, Friday, uh, I attended the ribbon cutting for uh solar microgrid that the uh California Energy Commission and Imperial Western Products celebrated. So that was a really nice ribbon cutting event. Um, then the manager took us on a little tour and he kind of showed us um where some of the product is made. Um, soap among other things. And so it was really interesting to see that, all of that production going on here in the city. Uh, and then the eleventh on Saturday, um, I was able to attend the uh, the Adel Nino event, which was really nice for the families. We had a lot of families show up, um, lots of resources, a lot of different agencies and departments that were there. I had the opportunity to speak to a couple. And so one of the things that they were mentioning was um, they think it's such a great opportunity to be able to be here in the city because they get access to not just Coachella residents, but also through our unincorporated community. So Termaloasas and even Mecca residents make it out. Uh, they shared that, you know, they let them know about programs like um the migrant program through R C O E. And so it's just a really good opportunity for us to put on those events and really share with the, with the community. Uh, kudos to Maritza for putting all that great work together and all staff that is involved in that. Um, and those are all my comments. Thank you.
Um, so for the Sunline Transit Agency, we have an interim CEO Gloria Salazar. Um, she won't be with us too long. You know, the goal is to replace someone within two months. Uh, an ad hoc committee was created specifically to recruit um, the best possible candidates or um to the Sunline Transit Agency. You know, it's, it's had a few challenges. And so we're just making sure that we have the right person with the right skills to move um Sunline Transit Agency forward. um Sunline Transit Agency forward. I also um attended Coffee with the Cop. Um we had a great turnout, we had great engagement, we had great feedback. Um some uh residents weren't aware of it, but they were stopping by for coffee. Uh and they stopped by and had a lot of questions. Um obviously, public safety is a top concern and issue. You hear about it over and over and over. I would have liked to see the city manager there as well uh for the duration. Um well residents have a lot of questions when it comes to services. You know, there is still a lot of um inquiries about um the future of law enforcement and public safety here. Um so there is a a lot of questions. Um and in times of where we've had, you know, homicides in the last year and the year prior to that. You know, it's a sensitive topic for many families. And so I think that whenever we can be accessible and available to our residents about public safety, that we should be there as much as possible. Um additionally, I've been attending, you know, many of the LMDs. Um of course, you know, the maintenance and the lighting is always, you know, a topic that is why we're there. Um but the residents are really seeking just community engagement and listening sessions from members of council. And so I'm hoping that maybe we can uh create a listening session series. Um and I've mentioned this, you know, the last meeting, but you know, target certain areas in the city. Um and advertise it so that residents can come out. You know, they have a lot of questions, they have a lot of concerns, but they also have a lot of positive feedback about what we are doing that they do enjoy. Um so it it really is beneficial to all of us. And sometimes they just want that direct engagement because they don't know who's, you know, working here at the city or they don't know who many of us are. It's just a reality, you know, many of us, many residents don't know who I am. And so, you know, it's part of our responsibility to make sure that we're going out there and that they're getting to meet us. Um I'm looking forward to the many uh events that we have going on this weekend. And I also want to, I like that um this week, there was a lot of the Alice Training for for Schools, which is the Active Shooter Preparedness Program. Um this is something that um you know educators want. There's a lot of fear, you know, that's been um mentioned by not just kiddos uh but by educators and staff. So I'm hoping that this is just the beginning to address some of the fears that they have. Um additionally, with some of these young students, um it takes a lot of courage, a lot of courage for them to come forward to speak. Um and they should be applauded or just coming out and having engagement that you know, I never had, you know, when I was their age. Um and lastly, I I would like to see maybe timelines on some of the things that, you know, we we have coming through so that we have a an idea of you know, when, for example, for putting RFPs out, I know that you, uh Gabriel, you had mentioned that you're putting an an RFP out for um the and uh the assessment for the police department and as well as doing the um looking at the ARPA funding uh and how we're gonna distribute the the rest of it. You know, when it had initially come through, through a study session, there was phase one, phase two and phase three. And so I just wanna know where we're at with that. Are we continuing with those phases? Um and I've mentioned it before, but I I'll mention it again is, you know, to bring it back, to look at the half a million dollars. You know, to help those businesses. Uh the ARPA funding was directly for um COVID uh impacts and we know the small business community was hit hard. And so I would like to kind of you know, finally be able to address some of the issues that they have brought up. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all for your comments. Just again, kudos to staff, Swolosito Sundays are they're fun. Um we're going out, I haven't missed one. And then obviously Saturday is our Mariachi Saturday. And that should be eleven from five to seven. But five to nine, but I'm telling, I'm telling everybody five to seven, that we can give them extra two hours and say, hey, city loves you. Five to nine and uh you know, it's just uh, I think we're gonna have a good little turnout. We'll have four different mariachis and and staff. Thank you for uh all your work. Um there's been, you know, a little bit of talk out there. It's like, how can, how we can continue to do this? Because I think the programming, I mean, people really like it, you know, and and I've always told them, you know, the biggest thing we need to factor in is like staff cost and and you know, and and we gotta get creative in terms of maybe not using so much staff, but letting kind of organically uh the parks just feel by themselves. Th- there are some good examples of cities, like for example, uh City of Palm Desert, they have a uh um uh music in the park where where there's like one staffer that does it and and it's kind of self-maintained and and there isn't all the barricades, but there isn't any alcohol sales or anything like that, you know, and but it's just programming. Uh but but with less, less staff involvement with just one staffer that's kind of in in charge of the whole thing. So let's kind of think through that, you know, because people do enjoy gathering as a community. Um and I know one of the biggest factors that's prohibitive for us is is the cost, you know, and 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 so we could really think through how we can structure more events. Maybe have a coordinator that's kind of in charge of it and it's not so involved, but there are some good models out there, you know. Um I just wanna uh uh you know, again, uh we've experienced a lot of rain. You know, and and when we have rain, uh it tend to expose our infrastructure, i.e. our streets. And we get to see the cracks uh a little bit more. Uh Andrew, I know we do it and so uh you know, I I I and perhaps we need to have a conversation about our road maintenance schedule and really thinking about that. Particularly, you know, some of the streets that have been exposed or or they 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 tend to get beat up when there's a lot, when there's just more rain. And so we wanna really kind of just, just take a look at that. Uh I I did get a an email uh from the folks at Haldies. And they wanna do a little ribbon cutting. I think that construction is is coming along pretty nicely. Uh and so I I put them in contact with Reset and hopefully the council um in attendance. And then I've had some conversations as well as well with Maritza about uh our seniors, uh they ask for more clay. Uh and I know some of that is being provided, but they're a little uh you know, they're our seniors. And at that age, I, at that age, we just keep asking, you know, let them ask, it's good. You know, um they're they're good people and and uh um and those are my comments, Mr. Uh City Manager, for yours.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. I have more comments.
Thank you. Well, with that, we're adjourned.